I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, October 28th, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Nueva Camina, Councilmember Salahudin, Councilmember Stewart. Online, we have Council Vice President Forsyth and Councilmember Fields. We also have Mayor Bernie with us tonight and myself, Council President Kritzer. I will note Councilmember Anderson if and when she arrives. There are four items on our agenda tonight. The Capital Facilities Plan 2050, General Government, a short-term rental code update, Transportation Master Plan Status Update, e-mobility technology maintenance performance metrics chapters, and Transportation Facilities Plan, and council talk time. So, the first item on our agenda is the Capital Facilities Plan 2050, General Government. And we have Lorraine Hamilton, our Parks and Recreation Director, here to introduce this item. Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Lorraine Hamilton, the Parks and Recreation Director here for the city of Redmond. This evening, we are bringing forward the Capital Facilities Plan 2050, General Government. As you'll recall, we had a previous study session in which we brought this item to you. This item has also gone through the Planning Commission, and I sent to you earlier today the Planning Commission's recommendation for adoption of this plan. In our last study session with you all, the request was to dig a little bit more into the financial strategy behind the Capital Facilities Plan. And so, that's the presentation and information we've prepared for you this evening. I'm joined by Kelly Cochran, our Finance Director, to help dig into that, and then Cameron Zapata, our Parks Senior Planner, who really has shepherded this process throughout the city. And honestly, publicly, just want to give her and Glenn Coyle from the Planning Department huge props for the hard work that they've done with our consultants and Quinn Kuhnhausen, our Facilities Manager. So, at this time, I'm going to hand it off to Cameron to start our presentation.
All right. Good evening, all. My name is Cameron Zapata, Senior Park Planner. Also joined here with some city staff members, we have Quinn Kuhnhausen and Glenn Coyle, and we also have our consultant Scott from Makers. And we're here to bring back the Capital Facilities 2050, General Government Plan. As a reminder, the purpose and goals for this project are to update the 2025 to 2030 Capital Facilities Plan, which was adopted as part of Redmond 2050. This plan forecasts the future need of capital facilities based on the 2050 growth targets. It'll identify potential locations and expansions for facilities, and it provides an analysis of how the city will finance capital facilities projects within its funding capacity and identifies those potential funding sources. And lastly, it updates facility conditions and department needs from the 2019 Capital Facilities Plan. The Capital Facilities Plan is considered an amendment to Redmond 2050 as it's a reference to the capital facilities element. The draft plan, like Lorraine mentioned, went to the Planning Commission on its October 22nd meeting, where they recommended approval with the following recommendations to City Council. So, the first recommendation is to add climate resiliency policies to Section 1, and this shows consistency with Redmond 2050 and the broader sustainability goals. Second, to add a statement to the city's commitment to using resilient and sustainable building materials with an emphasis on long-term durability and sustainability. Third is to add language to conduct climate vulnerability assessments during the design phase of new facility construction, additionally, expanding the list of hazards to explicitly include extreme heat, which has become a more frequent and relevant risk to our community. The revenue source charts are to be updated with additional text to provide clearer context on how funding sources align with current budget allocations. And then lastly, an added reference to the water system plan, especially as it relates to campus planning coordination. And so, here's a cost summary graph of the projects, and they're color-coded by the different functional areas. You can see that throughout the different timeframes. A bulk of the spending isn't focused on just one functional area and that it's spread throughout. And then here's the revenue sources based on timeframes. The Capital Facilities Plan, it doesn't commit specific funding sources. These sources are assumed based on current and projected funding sources. And paying with cash is generally not feasible for most cities. And common methods for securing funding include council manic bonds, voter-approved, and revenue bonds, as well as impact fees. The specific funding strategies will be determined during the budgeting process. And next steps include going to Committee of the Whole on November 18th, and then for final adoption anticipated for December 2nd. And then in 2026, staff will begin the process to update the CIP for 2027 to 2032, which this plan will inform. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for bringing this back with some additional data. And I'll just say, for the Planning Commission's report that we received earlier today, I had a chance quickly to take a look at those. I really do appreciate the Planning Commission's continued insistence and perseverance with their attention to our climate goals here in the city of Redmond. The Planning Commission added some, recommended some additional guardrails and protections, and I fully support those additional language changes that were sent to the council today. In terms of the financial questions that this plan had, I'd love to hear a little bit more. So, as Cameron said, the plan included some assumptions about how the plan would be funded. I think for me, the baseline is making sure that when we have done our job of adopting the Capital Facilities Plan, we've done our job of not necessarily knowing where every single dollar is going to come from, but proving to ourselves and the next generation of the council that we'll be responsible for implementing it, that it's possible to fund it in this way. So, at the moment, the plan is missing a little bit more of explanation about some of those assumptions, and I'd love to learn a little bit more about those assumptions. I see, for instance, the call on a bonding strategy that is big in these first few years, and then additional reliance in the 2030s through 2050 on greater investment from REIT and the general fund. And I'd love to, you know, hear about how we are prepared to make those obligations and that recommendation. Thanks.
Okay. I think that's me. Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you on an issue that impacts not only this plan, but some of the other plans that are coming through your process as well. For the past decade at least, the city's CIP has been heavily focused on preparing us for light rail. It has been the biggest influence in how we have prioritized and completed the projects is ensuring that everything below ground and above ground is ready to go before the train gets here, and it becomes much more difficult to put a water pipe underneath it. During that timeframe, we really focused our investments on ensuring that we were maintaining the infrastructure that we had, and that we were gaining the information and filling in the data gaps that we had in some of our functional areas. And facilities was a big gap for us. We had done, as you're probably aware, some facility condition assessments. We had sort of made some plans, and that information really needed to be updated at a higher level, as they are now doing. We also wanted to be able to get ourselves to a position that we were really making data-driven decisions, not just, oh, it looks like the wall might fall off the senior center, but, oh, yes, it did. So, what we have coming in front of you now is the planning element that has been missing. So, we have this transition of outside or external influence on our prioritization and decision-making. So, shifting really back to the city of Redmond and the business of delivering our community needs for each of the functional areas. And that's coinciding, then, with the development of plans that are providing us a lot of insight as to the state of our infrastructure and the priorities of the projects coming out of this plan. This information and the shift coincides with work on the CIP that I promised to all of you during, or when we completed the budget process. We had sort of plugged a gap in the MOC funding with bonds. But I knew that once we peeled back the layers and we knew more, there is something that would, there's a plan that would be more holistic across all of our areas, not just facilities, but our parks and our transportation system as well. And so, what I've been doing is working alongside all of these teams, such as Cameron's, to help them, to understand from them what their priorities are, and incorporate that into a larger plan. There, at this point, I do have a draft. I know which projects from a functional area perspective are the highest priorities. But there are still some things missing. There is a need for council to review the plans and provide feedback and insights that you may be hearing from the community that might influence how we prioritize projects, waiting for the stakeholder engagement process from the teen center to be complete or, you know, further along, and council getting to a decision point, or at least an initial decision point. I'm working with the Construction Division to get engineering-level cost estimates done. Right now, we have planning-level estimates, and once you get into the detail, there can be a big swing in things. I'm also working with them to review sort of the scope of projects and the risks that are assumed within that scope. So, if we have permitting from external jurisdictions or anything that may prevent us from delivering the project within the timeframe that has been, at this point, projected. And that is all coming together. I mean, it's been in the works, hoping to have that wrapped up. And my goal is to have a conversation with council about the overall strategy by the end of this year or early next year, just depending on the timing of the other plans coming through you and when I can get on a study session. My goal is to deliver you a financial strategy that not only delivers our highest priorities within the next six years, but it also eliminates some risks that we now have in the capital plans due to some accumulated revenues. We've got some impact fees that have really accumulated, and we need to get those spent, so I want to address that with this plan. And I am working to issue or recommend an issuance of bonds across all programs that would occur at the same time. So, if we can combine the issuance of three different functional areas into a timeframe of late 2027, perhaps early 2028, that will save us about $3 to $5 million in issuance costs. So, my goal is to work with a group of projects and kind of keep those as our primary focus and the focus of the funding strategy. The, we are able with, with our cash on hand to fund the CIP until really the MOC hits the construction phase. And once that happens, that's really that trigger point to issue bonds, if that's how council would like to go. When I deliver you a recommendation, I will also provide you with some options. I don't want council to feel backed into a corner to issue bonds. There is, there are always options, and I will provide you with some different alternatives that you, you'll be able to, kind of ways that the pros and the cons. Certainly, that, you know, one of the most likely solutions is, you know, delaying, delaying things. And we'll talk about what some of those options are and what some of the impacts are. So, that's where I'm at. That's what I'm working on. I can assure you that the work that you've seen reflected in not only the Capital Facilities Plan, but you will also see in the Transportation Master Plan, and you saw a glimpse of in the Fire Functional Plan, are feasible. That's my story. Stick into it.
Thank you so much, Director Cochran. Also, one quick follow-up on what you just mentioned. If we issue bonds in 2027, 2028, it currently shows that after 2033, it shows as zero, as you mentioned, kind of in the bond category. But we would be paying those off during that time. So, does, in this revenue source chart, is the revenue source, it's just, it's just when we get the revenue versus when we're, like, what we're actually paying off?
Correct.
Great. Thank you. I want to recognize that Councilmember Anderson has joined us. Other questions? I see Council Vice President Forsyth. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that update, and I appreciate your, sticking to your story. I made the joke in my head, so I thought it was funny that you said it out loud. I think your update answered a lot of the questions I actually had. I just wanted to state for the record that I have not had a chance to review the document received around 2:30 this afternoon. And if I do, I will follow up with questions via email. But I appreciate that, I trust that my colleague, Councilmember Stewart, read it, and I trust her take on it, so I am going to review it as well. But generally, they give us great feedback, so I look forward to reading that document.
If I may, also, the plan itself hasn't changed too dramatically since it was last given to you, as Councilmember Stewart reflected. There was definitely some strengthening around language, particularly around some of our climate resiliency goals. But just to let you know, nothing really significant in the foundation or principles of the plan shifted since you've seen it last.
Thank you for that as well.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. And Director, that was the point that I wanted to call out, so that we're, that we're saying it out loud, as well as what's reflected in this, is that the strengthening of the language, so that rather than considering opportunities that we're committing, and, I mean, there's, there's a lot of really meaty things in there, but I wanted to make sure that that did get some attention to it, because it's a significant distinction. So, thank you. And thank you to the Planning Commission that put that in there.
Councilmember Fields?
Thanks. Before the Finance Director goes away, it's always high-risk whenever I travel, because I talk to people with, that have different ideas and new ideas. So, recently, in Mexico City, ran into some builders, and they were describing some of the things that they're doing. And they're, they're pretty innovative in the way that they are using 3D printing, insulating concrete forms, et cetera. And I know those things are available. The question that I have is, in the financing methods that we might be looking at, are we aware of any constraints on how things will be built? Or will we have the flexibility if, in fact, our planning people and our building people come up and say, hey, here's, here's a way that we can actually build this with less cost, less, and use some of these new techniques? Are there any constraints on our financing that we should be aware of?
I don't believe so, but one of the things that I am doing during this timeframe is working hand-in-hand with not only our financial advisor, but also our bond counsel, to understand really what our options are when it comes to issuing bonds, if that's the direction that we want to go. Typically, though, there's not been those kinds of restrictions. But I'll, I'll check for you. But we are keeping an eye on sort of the scope of the project matching with the right debt issuance.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to find my version of the $3 or $4 million that you came up with to save from a finance side.
Thank you. I'll follow up with one more bond question. So, is the, part of the reason that we also see bonds in the first kind of, of the three timelines that we have there, because we assume that the bond, if we were to do one for the MOC would be so big, we wouldn't want to use that as a, we wouldn't want to bond for any other projects further out, because we would have already taken on kind of enough debt?
When you, when we sit down to discuss the recommendation, it won't be to borrow for just one project. The debt issuance will be done for a group of projects. So, there, I think that there's about 10 projects right now that I'm working with. And the debt issuance would be for all of them, not to pay for all of them, but to pay for a part of them. So, if we diversify how we're spending the bond proceeds, we reduce our risk a little bit. If any of those projects runs into a problem or delay, we don't run into an issue of not being able to spend down our bonds. One of the first steps, once we come to an agreed-upon plan, would be to bring what's called a reimbursement resolution to council. Basically acknowledges that in the future, we may issue bonds to pay for this group of projects. And what that means is that when we do issue the bonds, we can be reimbursed for approximately 18 months of prior expenditure. So, the, when we get the proceeds in, a lot of it goes back to reimburse the city. That lets a whole nother group of projects get going, and then the bond proceeds are used to pay for sort of the ending part of the projects.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate that clarification.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Director, I recall you had mentioned this before, and this is probably me way into the weeds more than I need to. What is the city's credit rating?
AAA.
Fabulous. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for being here, Director Cochran, and for sharing a bit more of the story. I think the task before us tonight is to evaluate this draft of the Capital Facilities Plan and to be able to move it forward. I think what's missing is a little bit more narrative about the story. So, the, the plan, it has these three charts that we also have had in the slides here tonight. And then we've heard from you that there's a strategy, these charts reflect a strategy that mitigates risks and takes into account everything that we know about. We haven't even mentioned it here, but it came up both in a question you and I had over email, but also in the Planning Commission matrix about the utilities, for instance. Why are those zeroed out in the, in the later decades? I think we need a bit more narrative of the story so that we can evaluate as a body that, yep, this would be the appropriate amount of, this would be the appropriate amount of risk-reward strategy that we're willing to hand to the next generation of the city. So, I, if this is coming back on the 18th, I think that's what I would be looking for. And I hope that that makes sense, but I'm happy to follow up.
Yep. I can help Cameron with that.
Thank you. Other questions? I had a non-finance-related question. So, and actually, I'll first make a comment, since others weighed in, that I am good with, with taking the Planning Commission's recommendations. And I'll just ask council, are there any objections to us moving forward with the Planning Commission recommendations, as had been presented to us, included? Great. So, and I do want to thank the Planning Commission for that, that work. One question I had is, there's discussion in here about a future Overlake Community Center, and there's a discussion in a couple of the elements about the remainder parcel opportunity. So, but it does seem like there's, there's some, there's a lot of, some uncertainty around that. So, I'm curious if Director Hamilton, if you can share a little bit about some of the visioning, especially for that, that neighborhood and that community center, and how you're thinking about it in the context of this plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, there is some vagueness to it within the plan, because there's a lot of unknowns, things that are a bit out of our control, things that are continuing to be explored, including that remainder parcel. What is identified is that there is a gap in a lot of our services over in the Overlake area. And then what we've also identified is that acquiring land to build in the Overlake area is extremely challenging. And so, from a facilities perspective, if we're able to get a piece of land, for example, the remainder parcel that you're referring to, how do we make the most of that parcel to ensure that we're able to serve the community of Overlake? There's a fire station need to move Fire Station 12. There's a community center need. And then there's also the desire for there to be kind of a smaller police, public safety precinct over in that area as well. And so, the thought is, is through a design, being able to be creative about, you know, putting the fire station, public safety on those bottom floors, and perhaps over top of them, putting a community center. That's one of the conversations that's been had. There is some vagueness around it, but the goal would be to capitalize on whatever space we're able to find and, you know, build up or out or around to co-locate as many services as possible to really be able to serve that neighborhood more completely. There's been conversations about that remainder parcel, for example, that could there be a way to access it off of the pedestrian bridge? Is there a way that we could connect those pieces of infrastructure? There's a lot of really cool, creative things that could happen if we're able to acquire land like that.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that in the, the piece about this idea of establishing some sort of community center in Overlake, there's also the understanding, there's the reference that it might be also something that's a public-private partnership, or it could be jurisdictional, since that neighborhood is so close to Bellevue, there may be some opportunity for us to do something regional.
Yeah. And the goal in the plan was to identify that all of these things are needs, so that if opportunity presents itself, it is reflected in a planning strategic document, but not kind of paint ourselves into a corner, if you were, by saying, this is exactly what it will look like, simply because we, there's so many unknowns in that neighborhood that we're not sure. And so, being able to identify it in each of the functional area, like fire and public safety and parks, but then to also identify and acknowledge that it could be a co-located space, but it might not be. It just depends on what opportunities present themselves as we continue.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other comments here? I had one other. I'll just do one last one here, which is, on the timelines that show up later in the document, and it shows, shows kind of each project in the near, medium, and long term. The Old Firehouse Teen Center project, I think, starts in 2027, which I imagine, I don't know if that's like when, when we get to the point of building, but it might make sense. Just, just to be clear, since we're in that process, and we've been talking with community a lot about that, as soon as we're able to make a decision, we would be moving forward on doing something on that, that we, we might start that in 2026 or kind of adjust that timeline.
Absolutely. And we can try to reflect that, that that process very well could begin sooner. I think, as we saw with the senior and community center, as that process started, there were budget adjustments that we made, there were shifts that we made to ensure that we were able to act as quickly as possible. And so, we can definitely work to, you know, just add a little bit of clarity that, at this moment, that's kind of where it's showing up. But pulling that forward is something that Director Cochran and I have talked really extensively about, so that we're ready to move forward when we have direction.
Great. I just, yeah, I don't want anyone to see this document and be concerned that we'd have to wait an extra year, when really, it's just a plan, and that's where it's been in the plan.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, within the scope of this plan, the acknowledgement has been that the teen center is running on its own process and needs direction kind of separately. So, as a placeholder, it's definitely imperfect. So, we'll clean that up so that it's more clear, so that it doesn't create any conflict.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. Well, I'm not seeing any other questions here. So, let me just pull up here. So, our next steps on this are, it's proposed for us to see this back on the 18th at Planning and Public Works, unless... see this back on the 18th at Planning and Public Works, unless the council would be good putting this to consent, but it sounds like we're going to get some more information about the financial aspect at Planning and Public Works next month. Is that right?
I'm not sure which committee is on the 18th, but it is not Planning and Public Works.
Oh, maybe it's not. It says, it says Planning and Public Works on our.
It's PSHS.
PSHS.
Parks and Environmental Sustainability is canceled for the month of November, so we just join in with another committee.
Got it. Wonderful. Okay, so we'll see that on, we'll see this back with another touch point on the 18th, but hopefully we gave you enough direction so you can come back and we can get to some resolution with the goal to be able to move to approval on the, on December 2nd business meeting.
Sounds great.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the short-term rental code update. And I'll let our Planning and Community Development staff come on up here. Hello, great to see you. We have Seraphie Allen, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, to introduce this item. Go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening, City Council. I am joined this evening by staff from the Economic Development Division, Kim Dietz and Philly Marsh, as well as a staff member who's online from our Finance Department, Denise Shinoda. And tonight, we will be discussing the short-term rental amendments. The short-term rental amendments are recommended to define how the city manages lodging and activities involving, involving short-term rental units. With the City Council's upcoming actions, these amendments will, one, establish clarity and consistency with Chapters 64.37, RCW, Short-Term Rentals, regarding the definition of short-term rentals; two, require Redmond Business Licensing for short-term rentals; three, ensure implementation of consumer safety, transparency, and communication protocols in accordance with the aforementioned sections; and four, develop operational standards for ongoing engagement with online platforms and with owners and operators of short-term rentals. The City Council has already received two briefings on this item in June and September, during which you identified several topics for your issues matrix, which has been included in your meeting packet. The City Council is anticipated to take action on this recommendation at its December 2nd business meeting. And tonight, staff will provide a brief presentation describing in further detail the amendments, as, as well as walking through some of the issue matrix requests that you all had previously. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kim Dietz.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I'm also joined by Philly Marsh, Manager of Economic Development, and Denise Shinoda, in case there's any questions regarding business licensing. So, the amendments to short-term rentals focus on three main points, as were mentioned: business licensing, operation standards and guidelines, and conformance with state legislation. These amendments are recommended in preparation for anticipated growth of this accommodation subsector in association with next year's international soccer tournament. The work on this amendment began in Q1 of this year. A cross-departmental staff team researched the state and local requirements and programs, prepared draft recommendations, and met with the community as well as stakeholders. The amendments recommended for your consideration take into account the feedback and ideas that we received during the community involvement, and that they would be followed by staff implementation after your action, so that the regulations and operational standards could be in place in advance of the soccer tournament. The definition of short-term rentals is probably one of the most significant in this package. This is referencing the state definition here, and what is important is that it identifies what is and what is not a short-term rental, therefore, what would end up being regulated by the recommendations before you. So the first part is that short-term rental means fewer than 30 consecutive nights. Next, if a dwelling unit is occupied by the owner for at least six months of the calendar year, and fewer than three rooms are rented in that dwelling unit, then the rental would not be a short-term rental. And then also, if a dwelling unit or a portion of the unit is rented by the same person for 30 or more consecutive nights, the rental would not be a short-term rental. And in addition, dwelling units operated by charitable organizations registered by the state, or for certain temporary housing, would also not be considered a short-term rental. So when we look at that, when we first measured the numbers of short-term rentals, it, it shrinks the number that would be applicable to the recommendations before you. So this is what I, what I was just referring to. So in 2024, AirDNA, which is a private measurement and data company, they provided this information for our tourism strategic plan, and indicated that 237 short-term rental listings were available in Redmond at that time, not specific to one platform, but over a variety of platforms. These represent 0.6% of the 2024 total housing units. Most of the rentals at that time were one or two-bedroom, and most also involved the entire home. The average nights during which these were leased was 113 nights over the course of the year. And then the maj, the majority of renting was indicated for leisure purposes. Here you can see a map of the city. So we took the, the addresses that were, we were able to generate and applied them to our GIS to, to try to analyze, you know, where, where are these? We did not expect to see them spread out through all of the neighborhoods, but it indicates that, in fact, short-term rentals are here in our community, and they are even in our centers in, say, like apartment housing, as well as in the neighborhoods in single-family homes or accessory dwelling units. So next steps after this evening is the City Council's anticipated to take action at your December 2nd business meeting, and I want to thank you. So I do have your issues matrix, if you would like me to pull that up. There are 19 items on the matrix, and then there are also additional comments and questions that resulted. So would you like to walk through that tonight?
I think if councilmembers have follow-up questions on the issues that appear on the matrix, we can, we can do that. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that, the, the work on this and, and the attention to the council questions that, that came up. So I'll, I'll open it up to, to councilmembers to ask about any, any remaining questions around this. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I had a, a follow-up question, actually, on an item that wasn't mine, but the response had a question. That's item number two, definition of short-term rental, and what that means. I noticed that for, for our, for our policy, that it includes, I want to make sure that I'm getting the verbiage correct, a dwelling unit that is occupied by the owner for at least six months during the calendar year, and in which fewer than three rooms are rented at any time. And that's different than our, our neighbors around us. So I didn't know why that was, because it, it seems very specific, and it also eliminates the, the possibility then for if somebody were to rent out a room, or possibly, we've got a lot of split-level homes, then if it's one large room downstairs in the lower piece, then they could rent that out and still not be considered a short-term rental. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, yes. In fact, this came up during our community involvement. So if you are in your home, that you're there for the majority of the year, and you are renting out, say, an entire floor as one rental, or maybe a couple bedrooms as multiple rentals, as long as you're not going up to three, then in fact, you would not be considered a short-term rental per the state. And if, if that's what we adopt into the code, then that would also apply here in Redmond. One of the reasons that we might be seeing a difference between other cities and what Redmond has today is that other cities have already acted on short-term rentals. So they establish their procedures and operating standards, whereas we're at that starting point. And, and since the legislature has adopted the definition, it seemed that, that was an option for us, if the council did wish to pursue that.
Council Vice President Forsey?
Thank you. I think that question may answer the question that I'd emailed in about potential impacts to caregivers. Can anyone speak to that?
Yes, yes. In fact, I took the opportunity to research the RCW. There are several, several forms of caregivers. There's short-term, long-term, there's family members, and so forth. So one of the things we realized is that it comes back to the definition and fee. So if a person is charging a fee for someone to rent, then you would weigh it to see whether it applies as a short-term rental. But in the case of a caregiver, we're not anticipating, in most cases, that the caregiver would pay a fee to the owner. They provide the service, but there probably wouldn't be that transaction. And so then it wouldn't apply, because there wouldn't be a fee going in that direction to the owner.
Great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing an unintended consequence for caregiving, nursing care, medical caregivers, that kind of thing. So I appreciate you diving into that. For the, the data point that you mentioned earlier, the number of available short-term rentals on those different apps, did we cross-reference to see if those, if there's duplicates? Because a lot of times, people will list on both Airbnb and VRBO.
Yes, in fact, it did recognize that there could be double counting. So we don't know, you know, how many, but because they were pulled from multiple sources, it was simply measuring the number of listings.
Can you say that number again?
Oh, 237.
Thank you. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I'm really glad we're taking care of this, and thanks for the responses in the matrix. I wanted to call attention to issue number 19, which integrates some recommendations that our subcommittee recently brought forward. So I was wondering if we could just spend a little time making sure that, that gets a little airtime, so that we can understand the solution presented, and, and the public can hear that we're working on it.
Yes. So this was brought to our attention, that there might be a relationship between what we're talking about in the form of a rental, to one of your discussions, the council's discussions, I believe it was on September 9. It was also in relation to legislation, and this is a Rental Landlord-Tenant Act, also involves manufactured and mobile home landlord-tenant act. And the idea behind this is to make sure that tenants are aware of their rights. So as a result of your conversation, one of the recommendations that staff is bringing forward is to include, in the same chapter where we would include the amendments for short-term rentals, under the Procedures for Issuance of License, include some language that's in your issue matrix to post the tenant rights. So in any rental, because you would not distinguish between the types, to have the applicable material regarding tenant rights available, related information and resources that would be provided by our Development Services Center. So we would probably design something, whether it's a flyer or some type of material, that can be easily posted in an accessible location for renters to be able to view.
Thank you. I was gonna ask about that myself, so I appreciate that. Actually, one quick follow-up question that I'll, I'll ask on that is, so do we feel that the way this is worded, and specifically including resources as provided for by the City of Redmond Development Services Center, gives us that ability to make sure that the information we want to be posted will be able to get out there? Because I know one of the things we talked about in the subcommittee, and then with council, was being able to link both to kind of the FAQ on Redmond's page about our own tenant protections here in our city, as well as to the State Resource Center that's being developed.
Yes, I do, I do think that this is the appropriate way of going about that. And part of doing this code change has been so that we're also creating more education materials. And so one of the takeaways is, in addition to the bill that was passed by the state, we are also going to be developing and working to make sure that there's information that's clear about the short-term regulations and safety requirements and those kinds of things.
And I appreciate the wording accessible posting. I'm wondering, just to make sure, I guess, do we think that that will cover enough to make sure that it means that, that it should be accessible to all tenants to be able to see it? Because we were thinking, you know, something like the lobby of the building, or some area that, that would be easily viewable by any tenant.
I think that's something we're going to work out. But I think that, yes, the idea is that it would be something that would be easily accessible, that they'd be seeing coming in and out, or for each individual unit.
And maybe we can put on the FAQ page for, for landlords.
Yep.
What do we mean by accessible posting? But I, I think that, that language works. So, thank you. Thank you for letting me ask a few questions there. Other questions here? Well, thank you for the, the work on this. So this is proposed, as, as put forth, and just to be clear, this, the, the new registration, license registration fee would be $153 for the year. Is that correct?
It is currently 153. Now, fees of that nature are approved by the City Council if ever an update is proposed. So yeah, we can say that right now it's 153.
Thank you. And thank you for answering all of our questions. It's great to, to have a lot of detailed follow-up. And I know we've been discussing this for, for quite a while, and I really appreciate the work on it. Is there any concern for putting this on the December 2nd business meeting for consent? All right. So it looks like, like you have your, go ahead on that, and we'll look forward to seeing this back for approval. Thank you so much for the work on this, and we'll look forward to getting ready for the world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Transportation Master Plan Status Update, E-Mobility, Technology, Maintenance, Performance Metrics Chapters, and Transportation Facilities Plan. And we have Seraphie Allen, again, our Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, to introduce this item. Go ahead.
Thank you. And as said, this study session will provide an opportunity to continue the discussions on the chapters that you hadn't seen yet, which are all included in your packet. And staff will provide an update on the TMP progress and the timeline remaining milestones, as well as a summary of highlights from these chapters. And then we'd be happy to take any questions or have a discussion. Staff present tonight include Transportation Planning Manager Michael Hints and Senior Transportation Planner Francesca LaBertie. And I'll hand it over to Francesca to get us started with the presentation.
All right. Thanks, Seraphie. Today, we're going to review the remaining sections of the TMP that have not yet been brought to council, which include our emerging trends in technology, e-mobility, maintenance, monitoring progress, and the Transportation Facilities Plan, or the TFP. We'll also give a preview of our upcoming milestones in the adoption process. Let me, oops, let me switch sides. Okay, there we go. All right. First, I'll quickly review our overall TMP schedule. We are on track for TMP adoption in Q1 of 2026, which is anticipated in early February. As a reminder, we pushed out this timeframe to allow for more time for detailed content review. We anticipate receiving a recommendation from Planning Commission in December, and we'll be back for another council study session in January to review the final draft prior to adoption in February. The Emerging Trends and Technology section describes how Redmond's transportation system can be supported and enhanced with new technologies. It also discusses where the city may need to look for more opportunities for regulation, as emerging technologies like autonomous vehicles, drones, and artificial intelligence become more prevalent. Overall, Redmond will look to use new technologies to reduce vehicle trips and environmental impacts, and continue to advance the vision of Redmond 2050. Strategies in the Technology section focus on exploring new data sources, developing staff skills, and forming public-private partnerships that will allow new technology tools to advance Redmond's long-term goals as a city. Redmond also wants to focus on adopting regulations for transprotection technologies where necessary. Privacy is a primary concern being addressed through Redmond's data governance process. This process will keep privacy at the forefront by implementing a framework for how data is collected, accessed, and used for city work. Through the Data Governance Committee, Redmond will ensure compliance with city privacy standards and address privacy will ensure compliance with city privacy standards and address privacy concerns from the community. We can add language to this section in the TMP to emphasize the city's commitment to data privacy through this project. I'll pass it over to Michael to talk about our e-mobility strategies.
Great. Thank you, Francesca. So, e-mobility is focused on reducing our environmental impacts associated with transportation in, in Redmond. And the strategies included in the TMP focus on equity in e-mobility infrastructure. So, everyone has access to EV charging infrastructure, assessing opportunities that can support and expand e-mobility infrastructure, applying clean technology and advancing e-mobility in freight movement, as well as with personal vehicles and micro mobility. Councilmember Stewart had a question about charging on private property during our committee of the whole meeting last week. Staff did, did do an assessment of charging needs, and existing multifamily housing was identified as a high priority need for EV infrastructure through focus groups and data analysis completed earlier this year. As a result, the e-mobility chapter includes multiple actions to expand EV infrastructure at multifamily and other underserved sites. So, Action 3B talks about assessing opportunities, increased charging infrastructure deployments at priority locations, which are identified in that analysis I just referenced. And Action 3C, work with businesses, property owners, and utilities to expand charging station access on private properties. The city is currently evaluating how best to structure these programs to best meet the needs of properties, while also leveraging incentives from PSC and the state. There's been a lot of discussion around e-motorcycle safety, and this came up last week as well. And it is definitely a, a major issue that a lot of east side cities and cities all over the country are dealing with. And just to be clear, definition of an e-motorcycle or e-dirt bike is any, any vehicle that has over 750 watts of power, which distinguishes them from standard e-bikes, Class 1, 2, and 3 e-bikes. Some model speeds top out at 50-plus miles per hour, while most are in the 30 to 40 mile per hour range. So, there are different approaches among cities, but most are focusing on outreach and education as a starting point. The Association of Washington Cities is advocating for a bill in the next session that would update the definition of motorcycle to include e-motocycles. And this would be a needed step for any enforcement actions a city would, would take on these vehicles. So we are adding e-motorcycle references in the TMP as it relates to education discussion in the Bike Chapter and TDM chapters, but know that a lot of the actions being taken on this are, are happening in the present time. And we are working closely with Communications Division to, to roll these education messages out. I think there's also some policy decisions to be made around e-motocycles as it relates to where they belong in the right of way. Given their speeds, they would not be appropriate in bike lanes. And so, there's policy decisions to be made around enforcement of, of those vehicles using bicycle lanes and trails. Next slide is around e-mobility delivery fee. This was also brought up by Councilmember Stewart. And in reference to Association of Washington Cities' recommendation on a retail delivery fee, which that recommendation suggested a fee of 35 cents would generate around $70 million. So it's seen as a funding mechanism to try to fill some, some transportation funding gaps. And this, 40% of that fee would be distributed to cities and towns. There are examples of such a fee being implemented in several states, including Minnesota and Colorado. And I think the, the nature of the question was, how would this fee interact with one of our, one of our actions in the e-mobility chapter, which talks about low emission delivery vehicles and potentially charging a, a fee to incentivize low emission vehicles? I think the two could be complementary, and we'd have to kind of keep track of that as, as things evolve. But they could be complementary in that low emission vehicles could be exempted from such a fee. But again, that's something that we'd have to dig into as that, if that legislation evolves. Okay. Hand it back to Francesca.
All right. We added a section on maintenance and system preservation to the TMP update to emphasize the importance of a well-maintained system and the need to accommodate, accommodate maintenance access when improving Redmond's transportation facilities. This section draws the connection between maintaining sidewalk, bikeways, and curb ramps, and providing safe access for all throughout Redmond. Strategies in the Maintenance Section call to establish a maintenance level of service standard for infrastructure assets, and a funding plan for the maintenance and preservation of the system. Additionally, Redmond wants to explore alternative approaches to maintaining bikeways, sidewalks, and shared youth paths, acknowledging that the equipment used to maintain roadways may not address the maintenance of all multimodal facilities. We received some questions about sidewalk maintenance at prior council meetings. And Redmond has an ordinance that requires the sidewalk to be maintained by the adjacent property owner. But historically, the city has not systematically enforced this ordinance. Some alternative options for maintaining sidewalks could be the city's concrete crew, where we could charge homeowners or property owners for this work, a community sidewalk maintenance fund, or an adopted neighbor program for seasonal maintenance. Regarding Councilmember Stewart's question about cost of construction and maintenance, taking an initial look at cost estimates for sidewalk improvements, it would cost approximately $63 million to fill, fill the city's sidewalk gaps, and approximately $38 million for sidewalk maintenance, which would include replacing poor or failing sidewalks. All right. Now I'll talk about our Performance Metrics section, which we're calling Monitoring Progress. The city monitors seven transportation dashboard performance metrics, as are shown here: network completion, mode share, vehicle ownership rates, which includes electric vehicles, vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, transit ridership, safety or collision history, and street and sidewalk condition. These metrics are how we meet the Redmond 2050 vision and track trends to make sure we're moving in the right direction. We picked metrics that are easy to track, with data that is readily, readily available to us and continually updated. We also picked these metrics because they're easier to understand by the wider community. These performance metrics are a combination of outcome and output-based measures. So, for example, network completion is an output-based measure, looking at how much of our network has been completed, while VMT, vehicle miles traveled, is more of an outcome-based measure. We assume that if we see VMT decreasing, or fatal and serious injury crashes decreasing, then we are making progress towards our vision. All right. I'll pass back to Michael.
Okay. Yeah, I want to talk about the Transportation Facilities Plan. The graphic on the screen shows how the Transportation Facilities Plan relates to the TMP and the Comprehensive Plan, and feeds into the capital investment strategy, and eventually, the capital improvement program. The, or TFP is a requirement of the Growth Management Act, and it is a fiscally, or fiscally constrained plan. So, we have, in the TFP, the revenue forecast, as, as well as the total cost of the projects listed in, in that plan. Next slide. So this, the, the city's, has adopted a plan-based concurrency system using multimodal level of service. This essentially means that the, the TFP defines what the sufficient capacity needs to be for, to meet the 2050 land use plan. And it helps ensure that transportation system is developed concurrently with new development. It contains a variety of project types, large capital projects, as well as more programmatic improvements. These are more spot, smaller scale projects, and then projects associated with new development. So, a lot of the TFP are projects that are associated with new, new development, and that will be built when that development is built. So, we have made some substantial updates to the Transportation Facilities Plan. I know this was in front of council last year, and that was just a minor update. This time around, with the analysis of the TMP informed some new projects, as well as bringing the TFP in alignment with Redmond 2050 policies and the vision and policies. So, we have removed some projects and added some new projects. A list of those additions and removals are in your council packet, and happy to discuss any of those. So, that is it for those, those chapters. Happy to take some questions and have a discussion before we move on to our next steps.
Wonderful. Well, just a couple pieces of food for thought there. Thank you so much for the really hard work on this. Councilmembers' questions. Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. On the topic of the adding and removing, removing and adding, I noticed that one of the one, the projects that we're removing is widening Willows, and we're adding widening instead Redwood, 202.
Right.
Going up to Woodinville. Is that to, because that has yet to be widened, and to take the pressure off of Willows on the north-south?
That, that's part of it, yeah. And just to be clear, the, the Redwood Road widening is really focused on spot locations. It would not be a corridor-wide widening, but there's several intersections that experience significant delay. And so, widening out in the, at those intersections to allow for dedicated turns. Also, some widening for a, to just improve pedestrian and bicycle facilities along that corridor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually also was, was watching that particular question around Redmond Woodinville Road, but I have seen the exact corridor that is looked at there with a lot of traffic buildup on a regular basis. So, I'm curious, can you speak a little bit to how it's envisioned by widening that, that stretch, that we would be able to alleviate kind of some of the traffic issues there, as an example?
Yeah. So, I mean, part of, I think it's 109th that comes to mind. There's just two directions of travel there, and no dedicated left turn, if I'm not mistaken. So, adding a turn lane would, to accommodate those turning vehicles that are currently backing up traffic, northbound traffic during PM peak hours. That's, that's one example that comes to mind.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsey.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarity on the motorcycle, e-motorcycle information. That was, that was one of my big questions. I would just ask that we really pay attention during session and add that to our watch list, so that we have any opportunities to testify on, on that bill. I'm, you know, that picture was at Rose Hill, and I, anytime I'm out for a walk, and it's around school letting out, I'm constantly seeing those, those kiddos on those very fast bikes in the bike lanes. And it's, it's, it's pretty jarring when they go flying past you, and you're out. And, and they're even going faster than a lot of the traffic tends to be going at that time of day. So, I know this is not on our legislative agenda, and I know that's coming back to us for, or did we already approve it? We might have already approved it. But I do think this is one we definitely need to, to keep an eye on and watch, because I know Cascade is also working on that bill language as well.
Thank you. We did already approve that agenda, but we could, we could discuss adding it, or we could look to see whether there's something under our current agenda that might align to us supporting that bill. I'd be happy to follow up on that as well.
Yeah, I think we, I think we should consider supporting that bill.
I see Mayor Bernie has your hand up. Mayor Bernie, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Just a comment on that, that we, in our legislative agenda, we adopted AWC's legislative agenda, and it's definitely on theirs. And so, that's one way to handle it. And then we also, you know, obviously, are always interested, the transportation and things like that are on there as well. So, I, I think we're well-covered to be able to weigh in on that, as the legislative agenda has been passed.
Great. Thank you so much. Other questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you to the team for bringing this material back and for addressing some of the questions that I had brought up in the committee meeting. I don't know that all of my questions were understood exactly right, but I'm not too worried about it. The, the intent is all here. As we're getting closer to the end here, I think the, what I'm ready for, and hopefully, we'll be able to do soon, is, as we're getting ready to head toward February, one of the things that Deputy Director Allen and I have discussed before is, the council, we have been reviewing these chapter by chapter by chapter. And now we're, I, I'm ready to stand up on the balcony and make sure that, you know, we're able to see the whole picture, and then it's all working together. So, I really look forward to, I, I don't know if the website has been updated yet, or if there's a way for us to start to see it all together. That's where I'm, I'm really eager to, to move on to, because it's a great body of work. And we're ready. Or I feel that we are ready.
We can provide an update on that. So, we are planning to publish our public review draft on November 12. So that will be available online, and that will start our public comment period, which will last for three weeks prior to our scheduled public hearing at Planning Commission on December 3. So that will be the time that the document is available in, in its whole entirety, and will be posted online.
I will also share that the team and communications has been hard at work making it something that is digestible and exciting to look at, not just necessarily a chapter. And I want to give a, a shout-out to Councilmember Fields from, what, like, two years ago, with the idea of having stories that were attached to each of the chapters. And that's something that'll be kind of included to help personalize each of them as well. So, just know that, that will be a part of that draft as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm excited to, to be able to read the whole thing in its entirety. Any other questions from council? I'm not seeing any others. I had just one quick question on the, the TFP. Was curious if you can just speak to the removal of the Avondale Road school bus pullouts?
Yes. Happy to do that. This is a question that Planning Commission also had. So that, so what we really want to do is a, a really comprehensive corridor study of Avondale, which will look at those bus pullouts to see really what value they're, they're providing. My understanding of, of that concept is to try to relieve congestion along the corridor, to have buses pull out of the flow of traffic. And that, that may well be warranted, but it would also interfere with other improvements that could be potentially made along the corridor. For example, separated bike lanes. There's only so much space available in that corridor. So, what we want to do, and it is a priority for 2026, is to embark on a corridor-wide study to really identify what the appropriate multimodal improvements are.
Wonderful. Thank you. I think when we saw, we saw the, the potential project around protected bike lanes on Avondale recently, I had noted that, that I've heard feedback from folks in that neighborhood around kind of just, just real interest in being able to have more transportation facilities, as we'll call them, in that area. I think it makes a lot of sense to comprehensively think about how we plan for that. So, thank you very much. I'm not seeing anything else from the council. So, I think we saw your, your next step slide, but just remind us, are you going to be coming back on December 9 for a study session? Or will be, further than that, in our packet, it says the 9th, but I think it's early next year?
Yeah, that's correct. We will be coming back for a study session on January 13. And that will be, hopefully, with a report and recommendation from Planning Commission.
Great. Okay. Well, we will look forward to seeing that then, and getting, seeing the community respond to what we put out there in the upcoming months. to what we put out there in the upcoming months. Thank you so much for your work on this. With that, we'll close out this item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is council talktime. So I'll just open up on council talktime. As a reminder, we've got a couple interesting weeks ahead for council in terms of our meeting timing. Next week, just as a reminder, we don't have a meeting on the 4th, because it's, the Tuesday is Election Day, so we're having our meeting on Monday, the 3rd. And so everyone just make sure to be here on Monday for our special meeting, listening public, but also council members. And then the next week, because it's Veterans Day, on Tuesday, the 11th, we're not going to have a council meeting that day, and we'll be honoring Veterans Day and want to honor, in particular, the veteran on our council. Thank you for your service, Councilmember Nueva Camina. So we'll have our council meeting on Wednesday. That's because of the code has, says that we have to have it on a Wednesday if there's a holiday. That is the reason that we move it. So that's why we're having it on Wednesday, but for the listening public, we will be on Wednesday, the 12th, be having our study session on that day. And then just also a note that the week of Thanksgiving, on the 25th, our council meeting is canceled. So the month of November is going to be a bit of a wild month in terms of meeting times, but just make sure that you have it on your calendar, all those different opportunities. There's also quite a few different opportunities to engage with community in the upcoming time. I know Centro Cultural Mexicano is having their Dia de los Muertos celebration this Thursday, so I hope that we can all celebrate that. And yeah, we'll look forward to some of the other things that are on our calendar. You all will see that council leadership has asked IDRA to just send every other week an email reminding council members of the upcoming events we've both received from community, as well as kind of more formal city events that are coming up on our calendars, just to make it even easier for council members. So that's going to be going forward. And I see Council Vice President Forsyth has her hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to call attention to the email we received from Eastside for All, asking, and since we already passed our legislative agenda, asking for language that states, "Support state legislation that protects our residents and businesses from the loss of critical assistance programs or civil liberties due to federal action." I thought that would be a good thing for us to talk about here in talktime, and since we've passed our agenda, maybe considering how we can ensure that we continue on with this type of language and this type of work, in addition to what we've already been doing.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw that email as well, and I will just note, I felt that, I think it's the first item on our legislative agenda, which really urges the legislature to support the most vulnerable in our communities, and specifically calls out support for immigrants within our communities. I think could be covered by this. Whether we'd want to add this specific sentence, to be clear, I think is, I think we have the ability, if we wanted to, to be able to make changes to the legislative agenda, if we wanted to add that. So I guess I'll open it up to council members to get their thoughts. But my thought is that it aligns in spirit with the first item that's on our front page that we intentionally put on there, I think for similar reasons.
Absolutely agree. I just, I think this language is more direct, and personally, I like the more direct language. I know we already have language to the same tune, but I think the more direct language is my preference, so that's kind of where I wanted to chat.
Great. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. In that, I think that there are certain times in history where having more flexibility is definitely the way to go, and if we say, you know, that our most vulnerable community members, that's open to interpretation. And I think that right now, we're at a place where we need that direct, because there's so many things that are vying for attention and can be distracting, that with this level of clarity, then it's not up to interpretation of who the most vulnerable is in this moment of time. And I think that's one of the beauties of our policies and our laws, is that they're living and breathing and always can be amended and changed later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. I haven't had too much time to really compare the two. I understand that there is a lot, the intent matters, and the intent is really similar here. I actually, so I've just pulled up our agenda, which is available at redmond.gov/council, because that is, it gets updated every year, the lead agenda that is adopted by the council. And it specifically says the names of the programs that we want to be maintained. So in effect, our language is more detailed in some ways, so yeah, thank you.
I actually don't have it pulled up. Would you mind just reading it for us, so that way we can have it in mind as we have this discussion? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure, I will share my screen.
Perfect. Right. So it says, so I think you're referring to, "Redmond supports efforts to maintain benefits for our most vulnerable residents and minimize impacts of SNAP and Medicaid eligibility changes, appreciating," oh, I think the previous sentence had said, "state support to ensure the safety and respect of immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers in our community, protection of civil rights." And I'm just going backwards through this, but it has a bunch of these things. I guess what I would say is, if council members want us to add, have like the exact same phrase so that it's aligned across our different cities, I could follow up with Amy Sei, and just to find out what the process might be if we wanted to make any changes. And I think we could look to see if we, just in general, to be clear on what it looks like, since it came up earlier tonight, whether we'd also want to make another tweak to our legislative agenda, just what it looks like to change it now that we've passed it, but as new things come up, since we're in a dynamic situation. Council Vice President Forsyth, I saw you had your hand up, and then I'll go to Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure we're not pigeonholing ourselves by, you know, SNAP and Medicaid are very, very important, but there's so many other things that are going to be on the table from this administration, so I want to make sure that we're not hampering our efforts.
Okay, great. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I'm going to be a little bit repetitive here. I mean, you guys are talking about getting the words right and getting the words in the right place, but we still have, from the very beginning of the year, at the end of our budget process, we've used $250,000 of an amount that we sort of set aside as reserve for this kind of thing. I would still maintain that, obviously, that's not going to be enough funds, potentially, to meet the impacts of what people will lose in federal funding. And I know that, you know, there's no way that the City of Redmond can bail out the federal government. But there is some things that we could do to mitigate some of the harm, and we could also begin to appeal to some of our partners, especially our business partners. And as someone said a few minutes ago, Councilmember Nueva Camina, this is, in fact, unique and rare time with some specifics. So I would ask again that council leadership actually organize some time for council and the mayor's office to consider what we can do and lay out a plan rather than wait for the next round of surprise pain. I know I'm repeating myself, but I have been beating that drum for over a year.
Thank you. And yeah, my understanding is that the reason that we waited on the rest of the funding was because it was based on staff, projected staff salary savings, and our finance department was confirming what those kind of exact numbers were, and we would be seeing that come back. I will say that it's been on my mind this week, as we're nearing now this, because of the federal government shutdown, the ending of SNAP benefits coming up on November 1st, whether there is something additional that we could do to be able to support our community members in need, and whether there's an opportunity for us to be able to help with filling any immediate gaps. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. So when it comes back to the agenda, I guess, I think that the agenda drives the work of our contract lobbyist, and so one question might be, actually, before we break this back open, is because the intent of those things is so clear, would it change her work in any way? Or does she understand what we're trying to get done here in the City of Redmond? When it comes to food assistance, I don't have this resource for you today. I will email it, but I wanted to let everyone know, and thank you for mentioning this, Council President Kritzer, Together Center has actually collated the food benefits and food resources that are available throughout the region, and as long as the crisis continues, intends to keep that resource up to date. And I also want to recognize the amazing community members from the Nourishing Networks who are also activating in some pretty cool ways. So I think that one of the most basic things that we can do here at the City of Redmond is just be good stewards of that information, especially over these next few weeks. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And I think there's a lot of aspects now that have come up as part of this conversation, and we are in a dynamic situation. I see Council Vice President Forsyth put in the chat that Governor Ferguson put out a statement today on SNAP benefits continuing in Washington via state funding. I'm not sure if our council members, who also serves in the state legislature, has any knowledge of that. Councilmember Salahuddin, do you have any other additional knowledge of kind of any state actions as of today?
Beyond what Governor Ferguson put out, there hasn't been a lot of coordination ahead of legislative session.
Okay, great, thank you. But it sounds like what we'll want to do is follow up on this. It sounds like there's interest in the council. Maybe we can have our Planning and Community Development staff follow up on how the city is tracking the needs and coordinating with groups like Together Center and other human services folks, so that way we can identify if there is any action that the city might need to or want to take to be able to support our residents, or whether they are covered via other means in terms of addressing these gaps. And then on the state legislative agenda, I'd be happy to follow up along with Council Vice President Forsyth to find out kind of a next step on reviewing this section of our state legislative agenda with Amy Sei, and we can confer with Mayor Bernie on that as well, if that sounds good to the council. And we can bring in the e-motorbike discussion that came up tonight as well, since we'll be having that discussion. Other items for council talktime? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I wanted to call everyone's attention once more to the Regional Utility Rate Summit that is coming up on November 14th. This is coming up because the cities convinced King County that it is a good idea to sit in the same room with us and to talk through the major issues when it comes to funding many of our utilities and what our ratepayers are going to need to bear, or what creative solutions we have. The rate increases that we are facing as a region over the next few years are pretty staggering. So I've RSVP'd to attend the rate summit, and I also encouraged, and it looks like it was scheduled for any council members who are attending the utility summit, rate utility summit, there's going to be a briefing on the morning of November 5th with Amy Sei and some of our other staff, just to make sure that we are well-prepared to show up in that space with the right questions and as able to be the best partners that we can. So just wanted to call that out. Also, in the spirit of continuing to be in an evolving situation, the Putras Sound Regional Council today sent an opportunity for council members to sign on to a letter to Senator Murray regarding the preservation of continuum of care funding, so check that out. Thanks.
Thank you. One other thing, since we're discussing upcoming events, that I did want to flag is that this Friday, October 31st, AWC is going to be having its, it's going to be having a regional, a district meeting for our district, which is District 7 of the Association of Washington Cities. Is anyone planning to attend on the council? Councilmember Stewart? All right. I was planning to attend, and I think I'm unable to go, so if anyone else wants to go in my stead, feel free to go. Just wanted to open that up in case there was anyone who's concerned about quorum issues as well. And I think Mayor Bernie will be there, since she is actually the representative for District 7, so. Council Vice President Forsyth, are you going to be going as well?
No, I'm sorry. I just, I don't see that sign-on letter, and I was hoping that Councilmember Stewart could either forward it or say again who it came from.
I have just forwarded it to you. Thanks.
You appreciate it.
All right. And I believe there's also still the opportunity to apply for the SCA boards and commission seats, so just as a reminder on that, if anyone has, is planning to apply for anything, just let the rest of us know. Not seeing any hands up, so I'll assume that we're about at the same place that we've been. All right. Are there any other items for council talktime? Councilmember Salahuddin?
Thank you. Won't take too long, but I've had several conversations with folks on council, as well as in the mayor's office. I've appreciated my time on council very greatly, and in conversations with City Attorney Mueller, with Cheryl, with council leadership, Mayor Bernie, and CO files. Next week will be my last week on council. Next week's meeting will be my last week, and I'm going to be giving a notice of resignation according to RCW 42.12.010 subsection 2. Just wanted to make sure that I shared it in council talktime, and we'll be speaking a little bit more next council meeting, but wanted to make sure that I share that out here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for your service on the council. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and we're also so glad to have you in the legislature representing Redmond. So I will note for the council that Council Vice President Forsyth and I were informed by Councilmember Salahuddin of his interest in this approximate timing, and are in discussion around kind of next steps for our council, once that process is to discuss around appointing for the vacancy that we would have on the council for his seat. So we'll be following up on some next steps on that for council. And just as a reminder, the RCW states that once, or when, if there is a resignation on our council and a vacancy created, the council would have up to 90 days to appoint a new person into that position. We'll be following up on that. And thank you so much. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands, so if there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned.